I'd like to lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello. So, welcome. We have Bob Jones, Mike Beecher, Jessica Van Orte, and Rich Hewlett here as board members. And I'm Kristen Powers. And we know everybody in the audience, I have all your names down. And online tonight, we have Martha, a college citizen, Joy Proft, and Deb Hawkins. And friendly reminder that Mike Beecher is our chair, so any questions directed to him. And I think that's it. The, let's see, so no deletions or additions, just a couple of things that have come up that we can discuss throughout the report sections. And does anybody else have any additions or deletions? I think there's nothing to discuss with the EV charging grant this evening, so we can table that for next time. And then if nothing else, the minutes that need approval are from the previous meeting, which was July 25th, 2023.
I'll move that we approve those minutes.
Any more discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Carried.
Any announcements?
No announcements and nothing pre-requested, but Rose Smith did send an email just echoing what Judy said at the last meeting, just thanking the board and feeling like a lot of the success from the historical society event came from everything that the board did to help to get everything prepared. So she wanted to make sure that you all knew, she was very appreciative of that.
Great. Okay. Zoning administrator, is no report, I see?
Nothing to report.
And do you have any planning permission?
No, that's, it'll be the next, yep.
And road formations, Dale?
Yeah, so the first thing I did, I guess you guys probably are all aware of that, it's last day, two days. So, hoping that we get something advertised if we haven't already. Do you want to work on the truck stuff now, Rich, or do you want to go over any of that now first while I'm here?
Yeah.
Is it at the end, or how do you want?
No, I think we can take care of that now. So, as you all know, we've been working on putting a truck together. And Dale had taken all the specs of the truck and he's gone through it. And we've pretty much narrowed down the truck that we, you know, we want to go with. And I don't know if you guys want to look at this again, or we want to make a motion. One thing I don't have is the information or the details that Viking is going to have. I can bring that for the next meeting, as far as upfitting the truck, but I don't have those details with me this meeting. So I don't know if you want to make a, we'll make a motion to move ahead with the purchase of the truck. And then next week, I'll bring the details from Viking and we can approve that. There is a slot for this truck at Viking. So it's scheduled to come, if we move forward, decide to move forward with it. This will be the end of October, first part of November, it'll come in to the dealership and then there is a slot at Viking, so they could take the truck right in and outfit it. So.
We would see it by Thanksgiving, probably?
Yeah, yeah, I would think so. I mean, they're moving them right through and there is, you know, there is a slot for this truck already. So we wouldn't be scrambling to try and, you know, get a slot with Viking.
Does it make any difference to Viking what they put, what chassis they put their body on?
No. This, actually, this truck is, what's it, six inches, eight inches longer than the?
Ten.
Ten inches longer?
The one that they brought over to show us.
So the body that they have and that we've already gotten pricing on will just sit a little bit further back on the chassis, which in turn will give these some more space between the cab of the truck and the front of the body. So when they're pulling out of bad spots, there'll be a little bit of room there where they can look out the window and, and see. So no, it doesn't, it's not going to affect that at all. If we were to go shorter, it would, but we, we decided to go longer.
With the longer truck, if we ordered this one, it, it puts a lot of the hydraulic components behind the cab, between the cab and the box, keeping it off, out of the, you know, roads out, and allows us a toolbox as well. So, you know, there's advantages to that beyond the visibility out, out at the back of the truck, so.
And the extra distance won't make any effect on maneuverability?
No, it's got the set four front axle, so the relity they're claiming is, is quite well. So, yeah, it's not going to affect that. I think all in all, we're better off going with this longer truck than, than the truck they had brought over.
And it's the same length as the last Mack.
Right, right.
You feel that that's the freightliner that you guys just decided was the, was the best truck? We know that, I know that the Mack dealer went out, did you look at Mack's at all, or were they just not really interested?
We didn't, we lost that dealership up in north, Sheldon one up in northern Vermont. And as far as service and getting parts, we've really struggled with that.
Okay.
So, I mean, we, we've gone round and round and round with this and determined this is, we feel is the best fit.
Which I think you at the past meeting did mention, the international and stuff, you know, those were options, but it's changes the class and the money. So this really, in our opinion, is the best route.
Can I just look at those quick?
Yeah. The warranty information's on there as well.
If we get the position advertised again, are we on?
I'm on it. Would we like to advertise for one or two? Two? Tomorrow. I'm just writing down, I'll plan to do, indeed, the website. We can make another poster maybe and hang it on the local bulletin boards. We can, Front Porch Forum, then the newspaper, and there's the option to do online and in print. Maybe the news guide. I think maybe last night, I think it went out on Facebook last time, I'll ask Deb to put it back out on Facebook. And if there's any other avenues that you'd like for it to go out to, just let me know. But those are the ones that I can. Craigslist? I don't know if we really want to search for somebody on Craigslist anywhere. So, and then of course, you know, word of mouth, if anybody knows anybody. Yeah, so our official paper is the. I think Redwood Herald is our official paper. But when you, when you contact the, like, it's VTNY News, that kind of spreads it out far and wide. And I know that they've got good options for online and in print, so. I'll run it by you tomorrow, I'll just send you, I can send you the. How about tomorrow, I'll plan to send you the description and you can just make sure that you like it. It should be good, same as it was before, but we'll just make sure that we like it. And then as soon as you like that, I'll get it rolling. It'll take a couple of days to get it posted everywhere, but we'll get it going. I just emailed it to you. So, whenever, when you give me the thumbs up, I'll go for it. Do you plan to have, or I don't know if you already have had, an exit interview with him? An exit interview of any sorts, just to get some, if he has any feedback, or?
I did ask him when he put his notice in, you know, we kind of sat down and, you know, I was trying to make him be honest with me. Some of the equipment was, you know, not exactly what he was thinking, but he said that's not at all why he is leaving the position. Reason he's leaving the position is because he's making over $400 more an hour, at least 10 minutes from home. So, 20 minute less drive and quite a lot more money. So, those were the, you know, and, yeah, I mean, he had every opportunity to be completely honest with his reasons for, for leaving, but it comes down to money.
Good feedback.
Any reason not to make a motion on that truck tonight?
I'll make a motion to move forward with it.
I'll second that motion. Any more discussion about purchasing this, this new freightliner? Is, I didn't see, is it red?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Carried.
Bring in the invoice on the Viking piece of it for the next meeting. And we don't have to put any money down on it, pay for it when it comes in.
Julie?
Could you include in the meeting minutes the price that you're purchasing this truck for?
Yes. So the truck including the seven-year warranty, just roadside service for seven years. The total purchase price is $156,446.
$156?
$446. And if you want, Julie, you can take a copy of this.
Can I do?
When the truck comes in, which could be the end of, sometime around the end of October. Maybe first part of November. But I can nail those details down.
So it's $36,000 that's unbudgeted money, just so you're clear.
We discussed this the last meeting. We talked about we could finance it, correct?
Did we discuss that? We didn't?
Yeah, we did.
No, we didn't. We did not discuss financing options at the last meeting.
We certainly did.
No, we didn't.
We talked about options, right, that we didn't have enough to outfit the truck, that we would have to roll some of it into it.
Right, we discussed how the previous truck you bought, you guys financed the truck and then paid for the outfit.
Right.
And I think we were $15,000 shy of paying for the, the outfit, financing the truck, and then we were still a little shy of financing the, the outfit, just because everything has gone up so much. So, and we can go back, I know we had discussed those details in either the last meeting or the meeting before.
Now we have to search for somebody to get options for financing, we go to the banks?
And what we talked about, it during that meeting was just taking the, the extra money that we didn't have in the budget for the outfit, upfitting, and just rolling it into the financing.
Right.
That was discussed at the meeting.
Yes.
So to be clear, I have not ever seen numbers. And I've made zero progress on getting a loan, or any information about a loan, because I've never seen or heard numbers.
Any numbers? Okay.
Well, this dealer will be patient.
Okay. You have a very limited amount of things that you can do as a select board to borrow funds without voter approval.
We've never had any trouble before financing the trucks?
You have five, you have to do it in a term of under five years to not have voter approval.
In under five years?
Yes.
Okay. So the last, the last, all the trucks that we bought while I've been on the board, we've just gone through the Bank of Bennington and got financing without any voter approval?
I know the 2018 Mack was done in under five years, and you can do that again without voter approval, either through the Vermont Municipal Equipment Fund, or through a private lending institution. But the term is required to be under five years, otherwise you are required to have a bond vote.
Okay, so we don't want to be longer than five years anyways.
We also don't know how much, like, we haven't budgeted for it, we haven't discussed it, like, I've had no information about a price of anything until tonight, finding out just the price of the truck. To be clear, I still don't know the price of the outfit.
Right, because we don't have that yet, so.
No, we do have the price of it and we discussed it at the last meeting.
Right, the price of the outfit, we don't have the exact.
I don't have it with me here, but we discussed it at the last meeting. And we discussed how much was in the budget for that.
Right.
And it was, if I remember correctly, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but we were $15,000 or so shy. So what we decided was, we could take the, that money that we were short and finance that, the money that was short. Put that right into the financing with the truck. That's what was discussed.
Okay. So, can't we just move forward, we're trying to finance that right now?
How much are we talking?
What's that?
How much are we talking?
A hundred?
What I can do is I'll get the, the price from Viking, I'll bring it with me tomorrow if you're going to be in the office. Right. Yeah, it was 90.
Nine something.
And that was for a used body that had been, you know.
No, I think that figure, it was less than that for the used body, the 99, I believe, was with the new body, set up the way we want on a new truck, moving forward with this truck, I believe.
So my understanding is we were continuing forward with the, the body that had been used.
Okay. I didn't know that either. I thought when we were getting a new truck, we were going with a new body. And I don't know at this point, if we didn't get back to them on that, that that body's still available, I think that may be on, I think that was a, you know, we need to decide now, we're moving forward in two weeks, that's going on another truck.
And, I mean, that's, we can figure that out tomorrow.
You just need, you need a solid number to move forward with financing on?
Yeah, and quite frankly, if I'm being perfectly honest, I think we need to stop thinking that we can figure things out tomorrow. This is a municipality, this is not a business.
Yeah, but we're not deciding, we're not deciding on that.
Mike, you can't go out tomorrow as a municipality and borrow $256,000, or even $170,000. Like, there are criteria that you have to meet as a legislative body to borrow without voter approval. And quite frankly, like Vermont League of Cities and Towns, I don't know that their answer to me even would hold water if a lawsuit was brought, because according to Vermont statutes, you can borrow for five years from the Municipal Equipment Fund, 75% of a purchase pre, of equipment price, or up to $110,000. Like, there's percentages and there's dollar amounts that limit what you can do. It's really not as simple as let's decide this tomorrow, and also, I want to be very clear about this, let's decide this tomorrow as a legislative body is illegal. All of the decisions you make are here and now, in a public meeting.
So I've got an answer to that, Mike, if I may.
Okay.
So we're not deciding, what we're going to decide tomorrow is whether they still have the used body, or they don't have the used body, and then we'll bring that to the next meeting and decide on it. We're not going to make the decision tomorrow. We're going to figure out whether they still have the used body available, or we have to go with a brand-new body. And then we bring that to the meeting and we decide.
So then there's nothing to decide tonight?
Yes, we decided to buy the truck. Now we're going to decide whether we're going to put the used body on it, the Viking has, or we're going to get a new one. And that will be decided next meeting.
Okay, without funding in place? I mean, I'm not trying to start a fight, I'm just trying to make it clear that.
Were you not at the last meeting?
I was at the last meeting and no numbers were mentioned.
Right, but you didn't also say anything about this that you seemed to know right along, that we, you could have mentioned that we can't just move forward on this purchase without, without all these other steps being fulfilled first. We were not aware of that.
Right along, at the last meeting was the first time anyone asked me to gather information about loans.
Okay. But we've never had this problem any other time, when we bought any piece of equipment in all the time that I've been on. It's never, that, none of that information has ever been brought up to us.
And prices of things have doubled and numbers are different.
So the state hasn't kept up with inflation, is what you're saying?
What I'm saying is I cannot speak to anything that happened before my tenure.
Right.
What I can tell you that I know was that the term of our last loan was less than five years.
Okay. So can you get all this documentation for us for the next meeting, or please get it for us before the next meeting, so that we can clearly look over and make sure we have everything figured out bef, before we call them and tell them we're going to place the order?
I would like to know what you want to know before the next meeting.
We want to buy a truck that's going to be $250,000 and, no, $225?
I'll get, I'll get the solid numbers tomorrow, and I will bring the truck numbers to her, and I will bring the Viking numbers to her, so she has the exact number.
And then we'll take all the money we have in our equipment fund, and then whatever is left, we need to borrow that money so we can get a new truck for winter.
And don't forget, the amount of money that is in the equipment fund right now, after September 11th, when the final collection, or when the final numbers from the first tax collection have done, have gone through, the appropriation amount will be able to be turned over to that too, so it is a slightly higher number.
Okay.
But like, these are all numbers that I would like to have had in order for you to be asking me to gather information about loans, and frankly, that I think that you should have gathered and asked of your financial person ahead of time.
Okay, well, we didn't, so we can't back up, but we can move forward. So you've made your point very clear, that we need more information and we need to have a better back and forth with you as we're planning this purchase. So he's going to give, Richie's going to give you the numbers tomorrow on the total package, and you will deduct what we have and the, and what will go in September 1st, because the truck won't be ready. And then we can proceed with looking for loans and making sure we're within all the state guidelines and making sure that it's not illegal for us to do this without putting it to voters, correct? Thank you very much. Okay. What's next on our?
So, I'm not finished. Are we done with the truck handling?
I think for a few minutes.
So the International hydraulic pump is bad in it, so we're going to have to have that either rebuilt or replaced. I haven't got any figures on it yet. We've finished up the gravel on the slight project on the late road and the switch road both, got the ditches dug from the switch road north on 153. And I guess in the next week, we'll be doing some more roadside mowing and chucking some more gravel and things as needed, and hope the rain doesn't create us any problems like it's done elsewhere. The only other thing I had, since it seems to be something that's got some people in town talking and watching to see how it works out, but the painting of the lines in the, in front of the store, I've reserved a sprayer and would like to move forward with spraying the fog line and the, the center lines. And to stop, you know, fire and, you know, continuing that down through the village to, to offer safety for the public, because that's what I'm hearing over and over with a lot of discussion. People are limiting the amount of times they come to the library and everything else because of the intersection being unsafe. So I would like to move forward with spraying, and I've reserved a sprayer, so I can move forward getting our lines identified on road.
Gib, you have a comment on that?
Yeah, I'm meeting with Patrick Wilson tomorrow on where the no parking would be and where the stop sign entering into 30 would be. And that's discussion still open, as far as I know. And I thought that we weren't painting the center line down through there.
I think to identify it as a road, and I think, and add safety to the traveling public, I think, I think the center line and the fog lines should both be done. And my discussions with Patrick Wilson, anything outside of their right of way, they don't have any, anything to do. I've got multiple emails from him saying outside of their right of way is a town issue. So.
Did you, you have any comment on this, you've been involved in some?
Yeah, I do. I mean, I talked with the town lawyer about it, and in conversation with her, she's very clear that that is grandfathered parking for Gib, and, and we have no jurisdiction over that parking period. And, and we have no jurisdiction over that parking period.
So in the town's own ordinances, it defines, you know, no parking in the town road. That, that's a town road there, that's, that's not, that's not a parking lot we're driving through, that's, that's a town road.
Right, so, so what grandfathered means is, he's been parking there for more than a 15-year block with no notice of violation.
Right, and so the ordinances.
Which were before 1805 or 1820?
We're not living in 1805 though, that's, you know, if, if we were to live that way.
Right, but that's why, that's why those protections are there.
We wouldn't have what we have today, you know? We'd all be still driving horse and buggy if we were going to live by the 1808 rules. This is 2023 and we need to look at it as 2023 and moving forward. This is a safety issue. This is a safety issue. And you guys need to really figure out, you know, where you stand on this. And I'm asking, does, did the lawyer give you anything in writing specific to this case right here? Public safety issues, she give you anything in writing specific to this case?
I didn't ask for it, but I can get it. But there's a reason why grandfathered.
She should come down and do, do some research.
And I'm sure, I'm sure that she will, but there's a reason.
Go ahead.
There's a reason why grandfathered is, is in place, is to protect businesses like that. Because the town has grown around the business, now we're going to strip that away from him? No, that's not how it works. That's why that is allowed. You don't strip that parking away from him now because the town has grown around him. That's been parking for that place since, since cars came out. You want to go back to the twenties, 1920s, we'll go back to the 1920s, that's fine. We won't go back to the 1800s, but there's a reason why that's there. Well, safe, and I talked to her about the safety issue as well. And she said, you know, there's safety issues everywhere. But in this case, that's his parking that is grandfathered in. Unless he has gotten a notice of violation, then that's his parking, we have no jurisdiction over it.
I'd like to see it written. And I'd like her to come down and specifically say she will defend that right there and, and any repercussions. The state's not going to do anything until somebody does, you already know that.
Well, the state has no jurisdiction over that.
I'm saying that intersection is unsafe.
Excuse me, Kristen, you have your hand up.
So it might alleviate some discussions with Patrick, necessary discussions with Patrick. So there was an email on July 21st from Patrick to you, Dale, that was, the select board was CC'd on. And Patrick said, "I checked with our traffic engineer about the school street parking concerns and he recommended that the town reach out to the Vermont League of Cities and Towns for guidance." He stated that School Street is a Class III town highway and there are no statutory with requirements for, for Class III roads. This issue is outside of our jurisdiction unless any markings are placed within the state highway right of way on Vermont Route 30. He suggested that you consult with the league or the town lawyer to determine any legalities in question. So that's what Patrick's guidance is on this topic. So it seems like, not to cut it off, but we are at 7:38 and we're only to the highway department and we have quite a bit more to discuss. It seems like after hearing anybody else that would like to speak, there's, we need to reach out to the league and that no decisions probably can be made on this tonight, so.
There's limitations on parking.
What we think that I would say to this, that everyone in this town should probably think to remember is that Route 30 was a single-lane highway until what, the 60s, the 50s at the earliest? This town entirely was built around a single-lane thoroughfare. And I'm wondering if the scoping study that we paid for with minimal grant coverage addressed any of that? Like, we've had speed problems through this village, we have unsafe blocking conditions through this village, and then we go through all of everything on this pedestrian scoping study? And the best that the state of Vermont can come up with is this our, this is our highway? And if you want to make it safe, you can pay for it. It's a little bit ridiculous.
Gib, you have one last comment?
Yep, Dale actually had a guy from Leagues and Cities and Towns down. And he addressed the distance with a copy of my idea. And it met the distances. And the only thing that we didn't mention was where we went to the select board and we thought coming around that corner and putting a swale in there and then taking part of that area that's no parking and putting like a wall there so it has no parking at all. Because it looks like parking, the way it's set up, it's not right. I agree with that. It should never be parked on the other side of the road. But it can be corrected. And the board addressed the idea of fixing that side of the road and correcting it and improving. And Dale measured all the distances from where my lines were and they came up with the distances that they needed. So I don't know what the problem is.
It was almost a foot, it had like 14 inches difference from your measurements to what we actually measured. And then you said that you could put in a blacktop drip ditch there and people could drive in that.
No, I wasn't saying that.
Yes, you did.
So it seems like, it seems like we, we're going to do some more research on this. We're going to talk to Vermont League of Cities and Towns and get their official opinion on it. And then we'll come back to the subject again with more information.
Can somebody check to see if our scoping study already done with the, the sidewalks? Took any of this, is there any of that information that's shareable? Because there's certain distances from crosswalks, certain distances from stop signs, traffic lights, that even the state has ordinances on.
Part of this project is working, is being worked on right now and, and.
We'll get to that in older unfinished business.
You can address that a little bit later.
I mean, to the extent that I know, I can say where we are at with that project right now.
And where we're showing in that perspective plan, sidewalking and crosswalking and stuff, et cetera, that will help to, they feel, the people that did the study, what, was that Fussin' O'Neil?
Fussin' O'Neil.
Feel that by putting sidewalks in that corner, it helps to, experience shows that it helps to slow down traffic. And then a crosswalk across it too. So that's going to benefit hugely for this intersection, along with other improvements that can be made. And that's where we're going with that. We're working on right now moving the next level to.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get to that. The only thing I, can I just add one small thing with this? I don't see what prevents us as a town from moving ahead and painting off those no parking spots. The spot across the way, right, where, where it's sort of blacktop and there's a sign and no one's supposed to park. You know, if you're going, if, if Dale is getting a painter, why not stripe that against the parking? And I know that Gib wanted to stripe the part in front of what, the pizza oven, right? Where it's no parking, to mark that off for no parking. Even if we can't turn, decide yet because there's disagreements on what to do about the rest of the area, at least we could stripe off the no parking. That's just my thought.
And just to add, I'd like to make it clear too that a motion was already made to support Gib's parking. So I appreciate all of the ongoing discussions and I think that they're really important and valuable. But I do feel like it's important to highlight the fact that this board has made a motion and has approved that motion. So that decision stands. So if that is something that needs to be readdressed and amended, that's something that you, as a board, need to discuss and determine. But at this point in time, that's written and that is, has been cleared. So just please do keep that in mind as you go back and forth.
I was a little confused, but I think that what Gib was saying that might solve it is that that area across from the store is a town park property, it's owned by the town. And you could widen out into that area as much as you would want to because the town owns it. Put a wall there.
That's what he was discussing.
And just re-engineer it, basically.
Thank you. Is there any grant agreements that we need to discuss?
Yeah, so just a couple other quick things. So the new.
Frank?
So the new batteries have been ordered for the speed signs, so those will be coming. In addition to, on the same topic of speed signs and kind of marrying this all together, there have been several complaints and concerns about the ongoing speed with this on Route 30 and the dangers of that intersection, which has been highlighted that you can paint all the lines in the world, but the intersection is the intersection and people are going to continue to drive how they're going to continue to drive. So I've spoken with the state and I've just reiterated the fact that this is an ongoing concern and we were requested to take the speed signs down, which were on Route 30 and seemed to help. So I've re-initiated the topic of getting us permitted to put those back up. And Greg Crizon, I believe his name is, has sent a plan along to us. So he just sent it to me a little while before the meeting, so I'll send it out to you. There is some funding that's required to apply for this permit. And the only way we might not have to apply is since they're going to be temporary and if they're put up either on the same post of a speed limit sign or right next to it, which he sent me a couple of pictures of where we'll be able to do that on Route 30. So I hope, so I'll make sure to send it to you all well before the next meeting and hopefully we'll be able to act on that and get permitted to get those back up, which hopefully will be a help. And then one other quick thing, I was reached out to by one of our outfits that we got pricing from for winter sand last season. And they're wondering about where we're at with making some decisions there. So I said, "You can go ahead and send us a quote." I wasn't sure where we were at, but I wanted to put that on the radar. I think it's about time that we get.
Time to start.
Wait, it's time we start thinking about that. So I was hoping we'd put that on the agenda for the next meeting, just to at least initiate discussions and see where we'd like to gather pricing from. So we'll already have pricing coming from one outfit for the next meeting, which you'll, again, you'll all get that before two weeks from now. And then the last thing is the two grant agreements. So there's the Better Back Roads, which we discussed last time, and the Bridge Project. And Dale, you can speak further to that. The recommendation was that the board move ahead with signing the grant agreement for the, sorry, it's not Better Back Roads, Grants and Aid. And that's kind of our same program that we've always worked with year after year. And then the Bridge Project, you kind of stated that that's up to the, up to the board, but there doesn't really seem like there's going to be much opportunity for in-kind service that the, our highway department will be able to provide. So again, that funding is something that we really will have to make sure that we can swallow our budget for.
Did we determine that bridge will have to be shut down, right? And we talked about.
The grant agreement.
We don't, I don't know that for sure.
It's in the grant agreement. It talks all about that. So it'll have to be shut down during the day when they're working on it or they're, for a small period of time, but it will be opened back up in the evening hours, I believe. I read through it, I, I don't feel 100% confident, just because I have a lot in my brain, but it's not going to be like a long-term shutdown. They're going to do what they can do to help make sure that it's still passable because they recognize the fact that it's quite a ways, quite a journey to get from here to there if that bridge is shut down for a long period of time. But the whole project is not meant to last more than, I'm not confident. I'm not going to say it since we're.
Not too long.
Being watched. But I will. It's going to seem like a long time, but it's not like, it's not going to be shut down forever and always. And there are plans in place to make sure that it's open back up. Like, they recognize for school buses and things like that. So, yeah, that's what I have for you there.
I do have one last thing, just in regards to the road. So it was a couple of weeks ago Dale had brought it to my attention that some new asphalt that we just put down on Buttons Falls Road had been, been tore up. And there's a solar project going in just before we get to Lee Beggs Berry's there, out in the Slate Quarry. And they had unloaded, I think it was like a pile driver for driving posts on tracks, tore the asphalt up. I mean, did fair amount of damage. So I had contacted the folks that are putting that solar project in and they're willing. So I called Wilk and we're getting a price on repairing that. So they came down and took a look at it to see what they'd have to do to repair it, whether they'd have to grind it out and patch it. But the ball is rolling on that, we're going to get a price from them. There was a couple of options. He, Wilk hadn't looked at it yet, but they did say they, if it's really bad, they'll grind it out, replace that one section of asphalt. Or if it's, if they think they can just repair it, what they do is they, they bring some device in to, to heat those sections up. And they bring some tar and some stone and they kind of melt it all together and then roll it back down. So I don't know what they think they can do to fix it yet, but.
It's new enough, so they maybe help make a patch like that, which potentially might be better than a joint.
Right, something that the plow could catch or whatever. So hopefully I'll have some more information on that by the next meeting. So we're just waiting on that.
I have the answer.
Okay.
The bridge is to be closed to traffic for bridge work during daytime work hours from 7:30 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. Emergency vehicles and school buses to be allowed to cross the bridge once Daniel's employees remove themselves and their tools and equipment from the bridge. Once we know the school bus schedules, we will have the bridge ready to cross at those times. Anticipated project duration is one month for bridge work and one month for painting, and the road can remain open during the painting work.
If that's not going to be too, not too bad at all.
Not so bad at all.
Perfect.
And that was for the phase that, the first.
That was for the one that we are.
Is there anything else that you guys have? So two things that came into my mind. I was informed that the North Pollock intersection has some new signs. Mike told me today that they put a new stop sign in front of Baker's and they put some, one of those signs that goes this way across the intersection.
I've been through there to see that.
Yeah, I haven't either.
I didn't pay attention, Mike was telling me that today. So he was happy to, to see that, that something's going on. And the other thing I noticed when I came through town, there's a lot of dirt in the road. And by Cor- by Number 4 Quarry where Williams is working. Do we, uh?
Oh, Riley?
Yeah. I mean, a lot of this size stone all the way up, almost to the, almost to that culvert, yeah, in the road. Excessive, I would say.
Going through Spruce Gum, coming out of his.
Yeah, you come out, you come out of Number 4 and head north.
Well, I haven't been down there, but we have been hauling out of there. We've got a project going on at the farm. So we've had tractor trailers in and out of there all day, every day, so very well could be.
Okay.
Us, you know, we could be tracking it. I wasn't aware of.
And it's not, it's not just today either. I've, I've seen it a few times coming up through there, I didn't know what was going on, but it.
Yeah, probably that road was, I think, when the town was hauling out of it, I think they ran a bunch of peystone down his, Riley's road because they were bringing mud out into the highway. And I think probably what's happening is those tires are grabbing that peystone.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's what it looks like.
Yeah, that's probably what's happening. And I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, it, I didn't, I didn't know who was or what was going on, but it just seems like.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll go down and scrape the road out. But our drivers haven't mentioned it and this is the first I've heard of it. But I'm assuming if it's heading back towards Route 30, then that's what it is.
Back up toward 30, yeah, okay.
What about that email we got about the handmade sign?
So it was confirmed today that the Towsley Hill Road sign at the junction of Route 30 and Towsley Hill Road has been replaced with a proper sign. And that's all I can speak to.
Anything else?
Before we get off the road crew, Deb had a note there about Paul Lovis contacting about a tree on the Switch Road. So I didn't know if you wanted to speak about that.
Have you heard about that, Dale, or not?
Yeah, Rich mentioned it. I think I know what he's talking about. Yeah, I'm not sure at this point if we can get it or if we'll have to hire someone down there.
I talked to Johnny Haynes and he can come either the end of this week or the first of next.
Take care of it.
Yeah.
Do that tree.
Just take the, the, at least get the limbs out of it that are ready to fall into the road.
Does he need our assistance or?
Uh, so he's not going to chip anything. So we can go and just pick up the blocks, he'll just block it up and push it off the side of the road and we can clean it up. But he wasn't sure on a, on an exact day yet, so. But he's, he's going to schedule it. And I had mentioned that, I guess, in the text today that I sent to you.
Yeah.
We just never discussed it when we talked.
Right. I had reached out to him a couple of days ago about Kristen's project, one on Mark Hall Road that you applied, that you said you needed, and I heard nothing. So, but you have, I guess, so. Nothing more was mentioned.
That's the grant, that, this highway safety improvement grant that we applied for. So I got a question back from that entity about the pricing. And in their documentation, they had suggested that it was a thousand dol- they wanted to price it at $1,000 per fixed object removal, which was for each tree. So I had requested $1,000 per tree. And then they questioned where. And then they questioned where I got that number from. So, um, I asked them if they wanted a quote, and I haven't heard back yet, but we just, I just figured we'd get on it and see if we could just ask Johnny to price it out for us to see if we were aligned there. So the grants, do you want to do any motions this evening for any grants?
I mean, what about the Grants and Aid? We always do that one, right?
We can safely act on. That one is, we understand that program. That's just the same.
The Grant and Aid, you're going to pass on that?
No, 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 safely act on, like make a motion.
We always get it, right? Like every year.
We always, we've been offered it. This is the grant agreement. Um, you should all have it. This, just to remind you, is for a $15,000 grant, um, with a 20% match. So the match amount would be 3750, 3,750.
And do we know which roads we'd be using that on yet?
No.
Not yet.
But we have lots of possible roads.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. So this is for our, um, our best management practices.
Haven't utilized this yet either, but we're working toward it. So we won't end up using nearly all of it because we were so far behind. But hopefully we'll be ahead of it for next year and so make it worth it.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll move that we signed the grant agreement then for the fiscal year 24 Grants and Aid.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried. Structures Grant, do we want to sign that one yet, or do we still kind of want to figure out how we're going to come up with that extra 100,000?
Yeah, I think we better wait on that.
Yeah.
What's, what's our match if I don't mind?
We'll put that back on the agenda for next.
Our, it's going to be right around 100,000. And we could give you exact numbers.
Well, I got it somewhere. I just don't have it drunk.
Um, I can get it. Just one sec. Who's signing this? Mike?
That was 30 months. I don't know if that was under our initial approval or after we signed it or.
30 months to comp- to complete the project after we accept the grant.
So that clock is not ticking yet?
Not yet, no. So that. So for the bridge, it's a, it's a $200,000 grant with a 10% match.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that, that's not $100,000, not a bar?
No, it is because of the total value of the project in only a $200,000 agreement. If the cost of the project was 220,000, then we'd be in business.
So if I can make a recommendation, I think that it would be really great, I know we said this at the last meeting, but if everybody could read through the grant, look at the grant agreement. Maybe Dale and Julie or somebody can talk, get together and talk, see like realistically what we have for time. See realistically if we can work this, you know, look at the numbers. And I know we said this at the last meeting, but I think this is what we need to do and we can decide at the next meeting. But I think it's a little bit irresponsible for us to decide on it tonight without making sure we have our i's dotted and our t's crossed.
Thank you.
Okay.
So we're done with the road? Anybody else in the road foreman's report? Thank you for joining us tonight, Dale. Assessor's report?
No, nothing.
Town clerk's memo. Good evening, Deb.
Um, yeah, I'm here. Um, I don't know why my video is not working, but, um, you have my buddy, my memo in front of you. Um, there's a first class and a third class restaurant bar license that needs approval from you as the local board for J D Bean LLC. Uh, the new owners of the farm restaurant, Christopher Wirt and Leanne Reese. Um, so if you could make a motion on that. And, um, Kristen, you can leave it on my desk for processing tomorrow. They did pay the $115 fee to the town. Um, so yesterday I came into work and spent a couple of hours dealing with the second bullet point on your memo with the, um, having to our phone lines. So it's all been rectified and it was, um, a little bit of a stress to deal with that and to find out that this had happened, um, with potentially costing us 100 minutes of international phone calls. So the wheels are in motion for, um, the phone company, which is now Mountain Telecom, where we had originally purchased the phone system prior to my starting with the town. They're already in place. So they are a little antiquated. So he's just going to put together some information and send us, um, a quote on what it would cost to replace our phone system. In the meantime, VTEL has waived the 100 minutes this time as a courtesy. Um, and they also have shut down our inter- our potential for international phone calling, which we don't need that anyway. We don't use it. We would never need to use it. Um, so it's just a safety precaution on their part that I gave the okay today for them to make that a permanent thing. Um, so yeah, so you already addressed the, um, the tree. I couldn't remember it. I had emailed all you guys, so I did put it in there. Um, Paul Lovis had come into the office and discussed that. And the conference, uh, the Vermont Municipal Perks and Treasurers Association Conference in September was supposed to be held in Montpelier on, um, Monday and Tuesday. But needless to say, Montpelier can't host that now because of the flood damage, so the conference has been moved to Tuesday and Wednesday. Um, so that's just kind of an update for you guys. Um, and also, um, in listening to the conversation about the truck, I think it's really important that if things get discussed in the two weeks before meetings, that the people that are tentatively involved in it be brought into it, um, into the conversations or planning so that, you know, everybody doesn't get blindsided. Um, so anyway, if anybody has anything for me, um, that's all I have.
Okay. Can I make a motion?
Yeah, I can make a motion for the, um, first class and third class restaurant bar licenses for J D Bean LLC.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried. And anybody else have any questions for Deb? Thank you very much for joining us tonight, Deb.
Yes, you're welcome. Thank you too. Have a good night.
You too. It's all you.
Two more this week. Payroll $9,614.64. Accounts payable $25,177.49. The accounting for that is general fund. Money is $15,544.43. Highway, $17,355.63. And wastewater, $1,892.07. Uh, as of last week, all of the tax bills for property taxes and the wastewater user fees have been sent out. Payments are already coming in. Um, I processed my first real big payment today. Um, from Vermont in July, we received, um, well, we received the municipal planning grant, the remainder of that for 12,690. We received some, the first portion of the Vermont Homestead payments in the amount of $24,987.91. And for the highway state aid, we received quarter one payment of $25,282.16 at the beginning of the month. And then because of the flooding, um, Vermont expedited the second quarter payment to all towns without worrying about who was flooded or not. So we actually have quarter one and quarter two in hand. That's it for me.
Anybody got any questions? Motion?
Yeah, I'll move we approve these two warrants, um, 24006 and 24007.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Carried. Thank you for joining us tonight, Julie. Emergency management?
Yes. Um, so Bob Morleano sent a report for July and the Hazard Mitigation Plan Update Survey was issued and the results will be added to the HMP update. Um, Bob Morleano attended virtually numerous state updates from the State Emergency Operations Center regarding the flooding in Vermont. And Polat was not affected by the flooding.
Okay. Perfect. Anything from the health officer?
Um, no. I don't think so.
She's, she had an update. She sent out an update on the ongoing trailer issues. I don't know if you guys all read it, so. Still working on it. Wastewater treatment. I think we read that last week, didn't we?
Was there something else that came in?
I haven't seen anything since last meeting.
Yeah.
Um.
I think we heard about it last meeting, though.
I always just like, there was something that came in. When was the last meeting? The 25th? There was something that came in O's about billing.
Facilities report?
Um, yes, a couple of things there. Um, sorry. One sec. So just two things that I have. Um, so Sue Laporte submitted a request to use the auditorium. The Polat Democrats would like to use the auditorium on September 11th from 11 a.m. to 12 p.m. for their organizational meeting. And the library book, there was, Harley can probably speak better to it, but there was a request to utilize the town green on August 19th from 4 to 6 p.m. to organize a po- party for the volunteers from the library book sale. So those were two requests that were made.
Everybody good with both of those requests?
Yeah.
Yeah, you got it. Everybody's happy with that. Get some action going. Anything else under the facilities report?
Um, do you know how the lights, has anything been done about?
Didn't know if anybody.
So we had to talk at last meeting, we talked about the, the piece.
I thought Perry was going to talk to that.
Oh, right. Well, Perry's not here, so maybe he did.
Don't know if he did or not.
Yeah.
I haven't heard anything. I don't know. I mean, I feel like we just need to figure out what size bulbs they take. It's that easy. I don't know that we need to have an electrician come change light bulbs.
I think those are mercury vapes, aren't they, on the outside?
I haven't even really looked at. But we also have the, um, light bulb in the vault in the basement. And the only issue with that is that like, we need a ladder to go down there that can, because it's kind of tall. Ceiling of the vault, and then there's a barrier, like a cage around the bulb. So we need to be able to take the cage off, place, well, put the cage back on, while, all while operating the ladder. So I just, I mean, I mean, two of us can do it, but it needs two of us to be able to like be down there for safety sake.
May I volunteer to, um, do the lights?
Absolutely. That would be awesome. Thank you very much.
I'll, I'll check with Perry to make sure.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think anything's really happened. If, if there's, if you find that it's more than just changing a light bulb or something like that, then you can just connect with Perry. But other than that, I'm sure that, that's, that's great. Anything else? Do you have anything from the school board or not yet?
Um, I didn't prepare, uh, I didn't prepare anything, but, um, I did want to, real quick before that, um, just address the door was fixed.
Okay.
So that it, and it's still not great, but it technically does work. Um, although he did want to express an interest to the board to maybe contact, uh, the preservation trust and see about making that door an actual like ADA accessible door because it definitely isn't now. And rather than, um, continuing to pay to repair and upgrade the door, it might be worth contacting them to see if there's any wiggle room, if we can approach it from an ADA safety standpoint.
So who gets to do that? Perry, he's not here, right? Right?
We're going to have the assessment done for the whole building, and it might include suggestions and regards to doors and things like this. Would we be fully paid for? Correct.
Yeah, we have applied for those energy assessments that Rutland Regional Planning Commission is going to be doing. And I don't know to what extent those are going to talk about, I mean, they're going to look at the doors and windows and everything. So they may have some suggestions for us at that time.
I can send a message to Perry and Philman on all the excitement that he missed, uh, this evening and just let him know that you volunteered about to fix the bulbs. And I can ask him if he wouldn't mind reaching out about the potential.
Meg Campbell, right?
Meg Campbell, yeah, yeah.
All right.
I think he's been in touch perhaps with Meg before.
Make sure Perry knows when you're not here, you get volunteered for a lot of stuff.
Yeah. Yes.
So every time.
That's good with all facilities? Older unfinished business. Constable ORI number.
So, um, I reached out to, um, let me think about it real quick. Okay, so I reached out to Tom and I asked for a little bit more information because after what he sent us at the last meeting, I felt like we needed a little bit more support in figuring out what to do. So he sent me an email again just shortly before the meeting tonight with a contact from somebody else. And I read it and, uh, still really doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me, but he volunteered to come to a meeting to present to the board and let you all know what needs to be done. It seems like there are certain criteria that a group needs to meet in order to be eligible to get enhanced law enforcement. So it was not clear in the email whether or not this municipality is cl- is qualified for that. I probably have to read it about six more times to try to get that to soak in. But I figured one better. It'd be really cool if this individual would come and present to the board. Um, I just feel like that would make the most sense. So I was going to reach out to that person and invite them to come to a meeting of their choosing, and I'll let them know what we have coming up, so.
Sounds like a great deal.
More on that. Um.
Sounds good.
Yes.
Pedestrian accessibility?
Yes. All right. So this is our bike pad grant, which we, which came out of the scoping study. And I have been working on with Stephanie Bork from Rutland Regional Planning Commission. So we, the consultant selection committee has done a review and ranking of the, of these six firms that are available through Vtrans's at the ready consultant services process. Um, we reviewed them and these, um, these were the top three that we ranked using a, um, a fairly detailed Excel spreadsheet of, of criteria. Um, let's see, oh, these are in alphabetical order. Okay. So these are not in top three order. The three top ones that we got were, were Cloud Harbor and Associates. I may be pronouncing that first word wrong, I'm sorry. Fosse and O'Neil, who we are familiar with, and VHB. And the, of those three, the one that ranked them highest was the firm VHB. Um, so what we are suggesting we do is, how this process works is normally we will send the, we will put together a request for proposals and we will send it to our top one that, by this ranking, which would have been VHB. We cannot send it to more than one at once. It's a little weird, but this is how it works if we use this process. We then negotiate with that firm, VHB. If we like the numbers they give us and what the negotiations, then we sign a contract with them. If we don't like the negotiations, the numbers they give us, we say no thanks and we go on to number two down the list. So that's how this works. It was a little odd to me when Stephanie and Peter, Peter Pochuk from Vtrans explained it, but that's how it goes. So we do have these three firms to go through. Um, however, the trick is if we negotiate with the first firm, we don't like what they come back with and we say no thanks and move on to the second firm, we cannot return to the first firm. So we can't have them like bid against each other in this process. That's how this at the very.
Change their mind.
Or change their mind.
Right.
Yep. Um. However, since they all are firms that work with Vtrans a lot and are familiar with this process and presumably come in, you know, they do it well, right? They presumably have not done a lot of, you know, cost overruns and stuff, otherwise they wouldn't be on this list. So the, I sent along this letter, which Stephanie sent to Peter Pochop, listing our top three and that VHB had been the committee's top selection. And the other information in this, in this letter to Peter Pochop, including, using the information from the Vtrans large-scale bicycle and pedestrian grant application, so the grant application we made and which we accepted the grant agreement for. The design consultant fee estimate, so for this part of the project, we are anticipating it will be $64,584. So that's what the request for proposals is going to go to these, the first firm with. And then it breaks out here, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but it breaks out the project definition and design phase and how it's estimated to take between 20 and 30 months. And it breaks it down for the conceptual design, the NEPA documentation approval, the 60% plan development, the right-of-way slash 85% plan develop, and the 100% contract plans. So to briefly summarize what's happening in this stage of the plan is that we are going to be hiring this firm, whichever firm we pick, to design the sidewalks and crosswalks in detail. And they're going to do the whole, like, you know, measuring the grade. They're going to, there's going to be a meeting that involves the public where we're going to get some more public feedback on it partway through the process. We're going to be making determinations about exactly what materials are going to be used for the curbs and for the sidewalks themselves and all that stuff. So in the scoping study that we did, they laid out where the sidewalks were going to be and the width of them and some detail, a few details about the materials, but this is going to be the full engineering study. This is not going to be the actual construction. So when we go to the actual construction, we will hire actual, we will hire an actual construction firm. So at this point, what I'm hoping the select board will do is just give the okay to send this request for proposals to VHB as the top-ranked firm by the selection committee and then to move on from there. And once they come back to us with their detailed proposals, then we'll run that by the select board and see what the select board thinks.
Harley?
So the deliverable on this request for proposals, the deliverable at the end of it are detailed plans, but no physical action actually takes place?
At, in this stage of the, of the grant, yes. This, yes, this grant is for the actual construction, though. So by the time the grant is done, we will have sidewalks and crosswalks and a little flashy sign.
And the total amount for this phase for the detailed plans?
Is the $64,584. Now, this does also include these consultants. Let me see if I can find the exact details in the, I'm going to pull up the request for proposals to get you the details on exactly what the deliverables are. It will have, for object kickoff and development of conceptual plans, submission of documentation and plans for NEPA process, I believe that's the permitting process. Development of preliminary plans, develop right-of-way plans and assist with right-of-way documents, developed contract plans, technical specifications, final engineers estimate and bid documents and assist with the bidding process and limited assistance during construction. So during the construction, they anticipate that these engineers will need to come down, I think they said between three and six times to actually oversee the process, but they will not actually be doing the construction.
Is part of the proposal for them to, that the plans they submit would be approved by Vtrans?
Yes. The conceptual plans are going to have to, they talk here about the, that they have to meet the 2018 Vtrans standard specifications for construction, the current additions of the Vermont state standards, the public rights of way accessibility guidance issued by the U.S. Access Board, and the most recent addition of the manual on uniform traffic control devices. So, yes. And Peter Pochop from Vtrans is part of this committee and so we've got him involved from the Gitco because obviously, anything that did not meet with their approval would not fly on Highway 30. And honestly, I feel like we're in luck that so far, crossing my fingers, Vtrans seems to be okay with the rapid flashing beacon and I know that throughout this process, they've been a little dodgy on whether we get to have the rapid flashing beacon and so I hope that they don't change their minds partway through it. Because they have them in Manchester and other places and I don't see why we can't have them.
Same reason we can't have speed signs, radar speed signs apparently.
So I'm not sure, I'm not sure at this point if the select board wants to make any kind of motion to go ahead and submit the request for proposals. I know that we had said for sure we wanted select board approval when the proposal comes in, to have a look at it and see if we want to go with it.
Seems to me like you guys have done your due diligence and ranked the three top. And if you've chosen one, and to keep this process moving, I think we...
Yeah, and the, just to briefly explain why that firm, VHB, kind of came out to the top. They have a lot of personnel and their personnel have a lot of availability. And they also, in the prospectus that they have listed on Vtrans website, they list a number of sidewalk projects that they've done successfully, which really bumped them up in our estimation since we are definitely doing a sidewalk project, so. They had at least three examples of successful sidewalk projects that they'd done with detailed descriptions of them.
What is, what is the percentage of that that we have to cover of the 60,000?
Let's, let me see if it says in here. The full, the full grant was for, this full grant was for more like 400 or 500,000. And our match, I think, was 20% and we were planning to cover it with the, with ARPAs, with some ARPAs.
So we got to cover 20% of that, 60,000. Okay.
I believe it's 20%. I don't have the number directly in front of me. But it was something like that, yeah.
That's, that seems reasonable, seems like what I remember I wasn't.
Yeah.
So, okay.
And we will not be paying this yet because, who knows if it will even fall into this current fiscal year depending on when we hire the firm and when they start.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion on that?
I mean, I will, since I've brought it forward. I'll move that we, that we send the request for proposals to VHB.
B as in boy?
Yes.
Okay.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried. Good. Thank you for working on this.
Problem. I'm looking forward to improvements actually happening at that intersection.
EV charging, did you get?
No, there's no, no update on that yet.
Okay. New business? No new business? Public comment?
On EV, it's right, the money, there's a, I'll give this to you guys. This is Peggy O'Neill by Banquo. She's a hot shot on this funding coming in from the federal government for EV and the Volkswagen settlement. And I highly recommend talking to her on the phone. Anybody is on this, she's like really good at it. That's this thing here and here's Julie, this is the funding. But the, if anybody wants another copy.
You've signed the warrants.
Oh, yeah.
Pass them around during public comment.
Good thing you're on it.
But the deal is, is that the Volkswagen money, I gave a copy to Gibby as well and said that these people, there's a guy that's in charge and they're putting it, there's money from Volkswagen, they're going on to major arteries of the state and then there's going to be money left over to put EV charging. And I was saying, really, since Vtrans controls the rail trail, that West Pollet could shoot, get something in by the rail trail and then if Gibby's handling this thing here, this person's a great progressive person, she's real, Peggy is a real hot shot when it comes to this stuff. She was one of the organizers that screened the fleet thing within New Hampshire and Maine people. So any questions regarding grants for transportation or money for transportation, for green, for all that stuff? She's like the go-to person to pick up the phone and talk to. She'll do that. She said she would come down and do a presentation here if we wanted one. She, over to Zoom, of course, where she could come down personally and do it to explain what is available. Because there's a lot of money coming in on this into Vermont.
Okay. Thanks for bringing that to us. Is there any other public comment?
Make a motion, Mr. Jerk?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried. Thank you all for coming tonight.